Even though we flew there and back, it still feels like I'm tired. We didn't drive there this time, we flew. Still tired.
Yeah, it's the same time zone and everything, right?
Yeah, yeah, inspired of that, right? Because it was so quick and we were so busy all day, Saturday, all day Sunday.
Yeah.
Good evening. The time is now seven o'clock. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, October 13th, 2025 will please come to order. Will the clerk please call the role?
Heidi Kader?
Here.
Sheila Pryor?
Here.
Sarah Johansson?
Here.
Paris Bende?
Here.
Valentina Ayers?
Here.
Dan Janestra?
Here.
Milan Sahoni?
Present.
Chase Anderson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Let's rise to recite the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for coming. Today, we honor Indigenous Peoples' Day, a time to recognize and celebrate the rich histories, cultures, and contributions of native peoples who have lived on the land since time immemorial. All right, so if you wish to speak during the audience opportunity to address the board tonight, please fill out a form placed at the back of the room and hand it over to our district administrative assistant Amy sitting to my right there on the way back. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen show requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. Consent agenda items are listed in the materials. The recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the role?
Valentina Ayers?
Yes.
Dan Janestra?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Paris Bende?
Yes.
Sheila Pryor?
Yes.
Heidi Kader?
Yes.
Milan Sahoni?
Yes, thank you. We have an agenda. The next item on our agenda is reports from organizations and I would like to invite Rachel Lynn, student council vice president from Wayzata High School, to please come forward. Welcome, Rachel.
Good evening, Superintendent Anderson, members of the board, and everybody else gathered here tonight. I hope you all are having a great start to your week. My name is Rachel Yin. I am the Wayzata High School Student Body Vice President, and here is October's monthly report. Firstly, here's a brief rundown as to how homecoming went. The Duckathon committee hid 1,000 ducks all over the high school for students to gather and collect for points. For the Peppfest, which is our annual pep rally, students filled the bleachers wearing hundreds of lays and glow sticks as seniors casting a bedric Henry Park and the emcee of the Timberwolves served as announcers for the event. This year's homecoming game was a bit of a tough one, but the fuzzy spirit and tradition of chanting Sweet Caroline during halftime more than made up for it. The Homecoming Royal was our very own student body president, Scott Lasota. As for the dance, this year we sold, quiet drumroll please, over 1,600 tickets, which is roughly half of our student body. Last Sunday, the National Honor Society and Student Council jointly hosted the Tackle Cancer Flag Football Tournament. More than 180 students and 18 teams participated in the tournament, and we raised over a staggering $5,000 to fight cancer. As for other happenings, our girls' cross-country team is top 10 in the entire nation. varsity girls' tennis won their first section match. Our marching band is preparing to go to Orlando for their tour. Wayzata Theater presents Anything Goes in the visit in November, and the Trojan Tribune has released their first issue of the year, racking up over 1,800 views. Finally, earlier today, hundreds of students at our school took the PISA/NSMQT in which high scores can qualify for national scholarships. In fact, 32 Wayzata students who took the PISA last year qualified as national merit semifinalists, or the top 1% of scores in the nation. What's more remarkable is that Wayzata makes up 1 in 10 national merit semifinalists from Minnesota, a testament to the students and also the quality of our education. Some of the semifinalists are gathered here today to be recognized for their outstanding academic achievements. Thank you, have a great evening, and see you all next month. But before I depart, I'm now open to any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Rachel. Any questions, comments?
Well, it sounds like a very, very busy month, and I know that our students are busy studying as well. I was at the tackle football, the tackle cancer football games on Saturday. It was a beautiful day, and I was really impressed at the organization and just how many opportunities are available to our students to really lead and do things that matter to their community. So thank you for having me.
Of course. Yeah, I think that's one of the best attributes of Wayzata's education. It's just the numerous resources we have here and also the encouragement to really pursue those leadership positions and organize fun things for our high school.
All right, yeah, some of the board members were at the homecoming, what we call the football toss that the school board has. We have a table and we have this big thing with a little hole in the middle where the kids come and toss football through it. And if the kids toss the football through that hole, they get candies, they get stickers and all that. So it was a lot of fun. And this year, I'm sure you went there before, but this year in my four years on the school board, I had the pleasure of having Dr. Anderson be there for almost an hour, so thank you.
So thank you. Yes, yes, he did, he did. So thank you for whatever you do and, you know, hope to see you next month.
Yeah, see you next month, thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is recognitions, and I will now join Dr. Anderson at the podium this evening.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our school board meeting tonight. As Dr. Sohoni indicated, I was part of the football toss, and even though I played guard and linebacker in high school, I know it's kind of hard to believe when you look at my stature perhaps, but anyway, I can still zing pretty decent spiral when I need to. Anyway, it's great to see you all here tonight, thank you so much. Congratulations to our students that are here, and we look forward to recognizing you this evening. I am always fortunate at our school board meetings to be the person that convenes the recognitions portion of the school board meetings, and with that, we will go ahead and get started. So our first recognition for the evening is for our National Merit Scholarship semifinalists and esteemed teachers. Now I'm going to read a little script, but first, we'll invite Amy to please come forward, Amy Swenson, and share the following. Wayzata is proud to recognize 32 Wayzata High School students who have been named semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Congratulations to these amazing students for being named among only 16,000 semifinalists from across the country and among 288 from Minnesota. High school juniors entered the National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2024 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which served as an initial screen of program entrance. The nationwide pool of semifinalists representing less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors includes the highest-scoring entrance in each state. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for 7,500 National Merit Scholarships worth nearly $30 million that will be offered next spring. Amy Swenson, gifted talent and coordinator at Wayzata High School, will introduce each of the National Merit semifinalists and share the names of the teachers being recognized by these students. Again, congratulations, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Amy. Thank you.
I'm just thrilled to be able to be here and give some accolades to the students that will be called up just shortly. When I call your name, if you can come forward and then kind of shake hands and then just stay up in the front, we'll take a picture at the end, okay? So first up, we have Mohan Atkuri, Rahul Bilakanti, Noah Carpenter, Felix Chung, Sordusnado Dar, James Iris, Jasper Feng, Dylan Kim, Snigda Katharedi, Sneha Kundu, Daniel Kwan, Angela Liang, Sophie Litwalk, Andres Lopez Gonzalez, Okshat Mahesh, Ria Mehta, Arachika Mandal, Aditya Neer, Chu Park, Kevin Q, Sanjeev Rutam, Pranav Salapaka, Chloe Sargent, Tevisha Tawar, Tanush Timasani, Selena Wong, Warren Wong, Louis Hoiak, Lu Yu Yang, Rachel Yin, Euclum Zhang, Aaron Zhou. If you'll join me in a round of applause for these individuals. I'm going to keep them up front here while I read the esteemed teachers that they've identified. It's a longstanding tradition at Wayzata High School that our National Merit semifinalists identify a significant K-8 staff member and a significant 9-12 staff member who have played an important role in their learning. This year's semifinalists selected the following individuals as their esteemed staff nominees. Each staff member identified will be presented with a lapel pin in recognition as well as the words that these students wrote about them. The K-8 esteemed staff for this year include Rachel Anderson, Chip Broford, Kim Dunford, Shauna Fairchild, Dave Jackson, Clarice Jornby, Charles Kreitzer, Danielle Miller, Robert Olson, Amy Parr Olson, Sarah Pinskecheck, Nicole Ringate, Matt Roweder, Robert Schultz, Michelle Thomas, Tracy Vernon, Rebecca Wilkins. And our 9-12 esteemed staff members include Lauren Campbell-Clett, Mick Cipra, Cody DeBoer, Dan Dobson, Alana Erickson, Seth Fink, Abigail Janice, Mark Gitch, Jody Grock, Mark Johnston, Catherine Kotke, Donald Kripzak, Amanda Layden, Tony Leland, Alyssa McIntyre, Jeff Pronzinski, and Colleen Ranier. Wayzata is filled with amazing staff, as evidenced by a summary of the words and thoughts of our National Merit semifinalists, who had these things to say about why this group of staff members was important to them. She was always there for me emotionally, as a confidant and friend doing more than her job description entailed. She was one of my biggest support systems throughout middle school. She was always kind and caring towards her students, working to make them the best versions of themselves. He fostered my love for learning and helped me develop the work ethic I needed for life. Because of him, I am the person I am today. You saw me as an individual, not just another student. You gave me a space to explore on my own, to dive into projects that were tailored just for my strengths, but also my weaknesses, all because you wanted to see me grow. She invests time into getting to know the people in her classes. She records specific information about each of her students just in case they may need a letter of recommendation someday. She sent me the kindest email thanking me for the work I did in her class with specific successes that I'd had. I was so touched by the time she'd taken to notice and recognize me. She's one of the best teachers I've ever had, both because of her teaching expertise and the way she connects with her students. She was my biggest cheerleader in every aspect of my high school journey. Her constant support has helped me grow more than I ever could have imagined. He didn't just teach a class. He taught me to believe in myself, to take risks, and enjoy the journey of learning. Those lessons will stay with me long after high school, and I'll always be grateful for the confidence and sense of belonging he gave me. There were times when I didn't understand why you wanted to challenge me, but I see it now. You were holding a higher standard, and you knew I could reach it. You helped me discover a work ethic and a sense of discipline that I carry with me today in everything I do. When things in class weren't going the best that they could have been, you were always there to help me sort them out. You showed me that a challenge wasn't a sign of failure, but a chance to grow. Even as I write this, I know that no words could fully capture the impact that she's had on me. I just hope she knows how profoundly she has changed not only my life, but the lives of so many other students that she's taught over the years. And for that, I could never thank her enough. Congratulations again to this year's National Merit semifinalists and their esteemed staff members. You make a difference, and your efforts are deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Again, congratulations and best wishes. Our next recognition this evening is for our Employee of the Month, and I would like to invite Sarah Kleinite to please come forward. Congratulations. That's quite a cheering crowd, I have to say. I would like to share the following, and then I'll turn it over to Sarah to share a few thoughts if she would like to do so. Are you anxiously awaiting that? It is our honor to recognize Sarah Kleinite as Wayzata Public Schools' October Employee of the Month on behalf of the staff at East Middle School, all of whom are here tonight. Sarah is our Student Services Administrative Professional, the heart of our Student Services team. She is organized and dependable, always keeping things running smoothly behind the scenes. But what truly sets her apart is her kindness, the way she welcomes every student with warmth and understanding, the way she gets to know each and every student. When students are seeking support, Sarah listens with compassion to ensure they feel valued, seen, and supported. She works tirelessly to make sure every student gets what they need at school to feel a true sense of belonging and support from finding their locker, combination, yet one more time again, helping them with activities forms, making an appointment with a counselor, or providing a listening ear. Sarah is consistently there for each student at East. In fact, students widely refer to the Student Services Office as Ms. Kleinite's office, or refer to Ms. Kleinite as the school mom since she is the welcoming face they see first when entering, and they know she will support them in any way she can. She's quick to lend a hand to any teacher, respond to staff and administration needs, and truly do whatever is needed to make East a place where every staff and student feels supported. On a personal note, Sarah brightens our day with thoughtful book recommendations, stories about her own children and soon-to-be grandchild, always taking a moment out of her busy day to connect. Our school is certainly better because of Sarah. And I'll add one other thing, is that once in a while, I'll be zipping by the window on the hallway, and all of a sudden Sarah will say, "Oh, hey, Chase", and then it's like, "Oh, okay, better swing in and say hello." So I've always appreciated it, I don't think you've missed once, unless you're tending to students or whatever. But anyway, please join me in congratulating Sarah Kleinite as the October Employee of the Month. Congratulations. Again, congratulations, Sarah. Well done, keep up the great work, and I'll just kind of start zipping right in there from now on and saying hello. Our final recognition for this evening is, it's our tradition at each regular school board meeting to announce the names of those who have indicated their intent to retire since the last school board meeting. We have three on the list tonight, two of which I'll share, and one of which Millen has requested to share. And the two that I'll mention are Suzanne Schmitz, Prayer Professional, Central Middle School, 11 years, and Kathy Statema, Custodian, Northwoods, 21 years. Congratulations to them.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I think he's too humble to honor himself, so, there you go. So as you might have heard, Superintendent Anderson has announced his plan to retire at the end of the school year on June 30th, 2026. This marks a special milestone in his service to Wayzata Public Schools. His leadership has played a key role in making Wayzata one of the top schools, school districts in Minnesota, and his impact will be felt for years to come. We are deeply grateful for his dedication and vision and are excited to continue working alongside him throughout this school year as we celebrate his many contributions. Thank you and congratulations again, Dr. Anderson.
Well, thank you for that, Dr. Sohoni and members of the board. Thank you for giving me a moment at the mic here, and I'm going to try to keep it brief and to the point. I should have taken the lead from Sarah and said nothing, probably, but that didn't stick with me, I guess, for all that long. Anyway, in all sincerity, I won't spend too much time, but I do want to just say thank you, and it's kind of surreal, that's the word that I've been using, because it's been a wonderful 17 years and counting here in Wayzata. I started in July 1 of 2008. My daughter Emily was heading into 4th grade at Kimberly Lane, and our son Paul was heading into 8th grade at Central Middle School, and they're 31 and 27 now, so they're well beyond their time here in the district. But for the first nine years, I really enjoyed being a parent in the district as well as doing my professional role as well. So it was a great way for me to get immersed into the three levels of schools. Really, within a couple of years, we'd experienced all three levels with our two kids, and it was really great for me to get an upfront and center view of all the great things that happened in the classroom. All of this started 42 years ago and counting, way back in the fall of 1983, when I started out as a 7th grade life science teacher, an 8th grade earth science teacher, an assistant varsity football coach, and assistant track coach in Bellevue, Nebraska. And with every move, I continued blowing a little bit further north, I guess, and landed in this wonderful community of Wayzata and have just really greatly appreciated all the wonderful opportunities that my family and I have had here and all the great career opportunities that I've had. And I did some quick math this afternoon, and I calculated that by the time I wrap up my 18th year, I probably will have been at about 500 school board meetings or more, if I counted all the regular meetings, the work sessions, and all the other special meetings that come up during the course of a year. But it's really been fantastic, and I know we have at least a few students here tonight. You might want to put a lobby in with the school board tonight. Could you please hire a superintendent that would give us more snow days? Because I'm the snow day guy for any students out there listening. Sometimes I'll go visit classrooms, and the teachers will be kind to introduce me as the superintendent. They kind of look, you know, depending on the age, going, "Hmm, I wonder what that is", and then I just say, "I'm the snow day guy", and they get it right away. But anyway, enough on that. I just wanted to again say thank you, not only to those here tonight, to the board, but to the whole community and the staff, and I'm thankful. Thank you.
500 school board meetings, wow, that's a lot.
Yes, it is.
Yes. Oh, where are we? We are on item number five. We just finished five, right? Yes. Yes. Again, congratulations to the honorees, and thank you, Dr. Anderson. Okay, now we have the highlight of our regular meetings, the school spotlight presentation. Tonight, the spotlight is on the East Middle School, and I'll turn it over to Executive Director of Teaching and Learning Dana Miller to make the introductions.
Thank you. That's a tough act to follow, Dr. Anderson, so I know we're all very grateful here. Thank you. And with that, then, tonight, it's my privilege to introduce Principal Meg Bennett and her team tonight. They're here to talk to us why we know academic excellence is important, that doesn't happen unless our students feel like they belong and are cared for and respected in our buildings. And so tonight, the East staff are here to talk about how they ensure a high-quality daily experience, and some special experiences that we got to get back to today, or this year, with the help of the Wayzata Education Association. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Bennett and her team. Thank you.
What'd she say? I won't. No, I'm plenty allowed. Alrighty, are the slides going to come up? Awesome. Good evening, board. Thank you for allowing us the time to spotlight a lot that we're proud of at East Middle School. Dr. Anderson, congratulations to you. We are here tonight to speak to what we value at East, which is the experience of our students each and every day. It was so fun to be able to see the National Merit Scholars and hear about how they speak to their experience and their connection with their educators. And our core purpose at Wayzata Schools is to ensure a world-class education that prepares each and every student to thrive today and excel tomorrow in what we can describe as certainly an ever-changing world and society. Our purpose at East is to really align with our core purpose. So we look at our district's vision, what we intend to create and experience every day. We model excellence where students of all ages, we work to discover their unique talents and certainly develop their love of learning, and we do that through many different ways. We are going to talk today about exceptional student experiences at East. At East, we really have been focusing on the district priorities and strategic execution of that vision. Tonight, as I said, we're going to highlight how we ensure a high-quality daily experience for each and every student, and how we use that vision to drive each and every decision and every action that we do at East. We really focus on building awareness of the health and well-being of our students. As we know, as middle school students, there's a lot of changes that they're experiencing, and we are there to support them each and every step of the way. Ms. Klineite is certainly an exemplar example of that, and how she ensures that each of our students come into our office, she knows them by name, she knows what their interests are, she has little interactions uniquely with each of them, and that carries through our entire building and really drives what we want each student to feel in every interaction at our school. Lastly, we're going to highlight how we have learned to improve our engagement with community through a highlight of our partnership with Wayzata Education Fund. So when I started at East, we worked to collectively create our vision, what we were hoping to see in our student experience, and that is what drives our day-to-day. So at East, we believe every student deserves to feel a sense of belonging, that they are cared for, valued, and treated with respect. We believe in high-functioning relationships between our students and staff that allow each of our students to find joy in learning, to embrace challenge with courage and curiosity, and that we empower our students to have a voice in our school, and that we remain responsive and innovative to that voice and their feedback. You will see how we're highlighting that in a few different ways. I could give you 100 ways in which we highlight our vision, and we're going to find three ways to try to highlight that tonight with a group of our staff and our students. So first, I want to talk to how the goals that we've created for our professional learning and for ultimately our outcomes have been created this year, as I said, driven by the vision for student experience. The first, we really focus on literacy as our foundation for academic excellence. We have been working really hard at the start of the school year to develop and implement a school-wide vocabulary plan, as we have found in our data that vocabulary is really an area of need, that we believe will boost each and every student's performance in literacy this year. In addition, we are honing in on our Tier 3 reading intervention, assuring that we are providing individualized intervention with fidelity to ensure that our students that are demonstrating the highest level of need in literacy is getting high level of intervention and support. You can see the actions we have identified on the right-hand side, that's to start the school year. We have been really focused to put action to our instructional practice focus areas to ensure we can measure implementation with fidelity and get feedback to one another to ensure we remain collectively committed to our goals. Our second goal is around commitment to the PLC process. That's our professional learning community, where teachers come together and support one another to review the data in their classes and identify instructional shifts that they're committed to make to improve the outcomes for our students. So you'll see, again, the actions that we have outlined as we start the school year, really focusing on using data protocol and bringing common data forward, so that professional learning communities can support one another on strategies that were more effective with groups of students, and were collaboratively to improve our student outcomes. And lastly, this is the area where we're focusing tonight, is that we will improve the student experience. I have a student leadership team at East of about 75 students this year, and they have supported us to collectively identify what would be the best middle school in the nation. And how they would measure that is for students to be able to answer yes to three questions. Do you have a supportive adult at school? Are you happy at school? And are you proud of the learning that you're doing? So we use those three questions to guide our experience with students. You will hear one of our student leaders speak to her experience and how we responded. Last year, in the spring, we learned that feeling happy at East was the area we needed to focus on the most, and so that is what is driving many of the actions that you see on the right-hand side. Our students will take the survey again in November to give us baseline data on their experience as we start the school year, and then they'll take it again in May to give us progress report on how we have done with our student experience at East. So again, we're going to highlight three ways in which we have ensured a high-quality daily experience for each of our students at East. The first is working to continually create experiences that cultivate joy, high-functioning relationships between our staff and students, and ultimately improve the health and well-being of our community, both in and out of the classroom. We have been doing learning at East around Generation Alpha, the students that we are working with right now, and about how the technology that they have grown up with in their hand has impacted their learning and ultimately their well-being. And we have taken that learning to really focus in on the importance of play and joy as strategies to ensure that we're supporting the well-being of our students. So you will hear of a very incredible experience where they got to play in nature in a little bit. Secondly, we're going to highlight with one of our student leaders how she has felt we are responsive to student voice and remain innovative in our thinking. And lastly, Mr. Stika, one of our incredible teachers in 8th grade, is going to speak to his commitment as an example on how we take that vision for our student experience and work to deliberately ensure our instructional practices meet that vision. So at this time, I am going to invite our Eagle Bluff team up. Welcome, Eagle Bluff team. And they are going to speak about an experience at Eagle Bluff that we had this year that aligns with our student experience vision. Christian, would you like to go first?
Sure.
All right.
I'm Christian Beherin. Been teaching at East for 14 years here. I helped with the prep with the trip, and in the lead-up to the trip, one of the things that I talked about was this is an opportunity for our kids to be brave, and what that looks like for all of them is going to be pretty different. For some kids, it's going to be, you know, up on the high ropes. That'll be a time where things are scary, and they have, they're going to do it anyways. For some of them, it's building a shelter, going on a hike, or getting sweaty and dirty, getting bit by bugs, you know, things that they're not accustomed to. And for some of them, it was stepping foot on that bus at 6:30 in the morning. Right? We know that those are all opportunities for them to overcome something that they think that they can't do. The other part of, another way that kids can be brave is, you know, maybe the high-rope course is a piece of cake for them, but how can they show up for people who are struggling? Can they support somebody who's a friend, or maybe not even a friend? Can they help them get through all of that and have their back? Right? If we can bring that back, bravery and empathy, if we can have our students bring those things back into our building, that really sets the tone for our school year. Now, one trip isn't going to make wholesale change, but again, setting the tone, this is how we show up for each other. This is what we expect from each other at East. And we, I always come back to this, there's no growth in comfort, no comfort in growth. And you heard it from one of the Merit Scholars. I wrote it down, the phrase, "A chance to grow." Right? I think, I mean, humans, but also our 11 and 12-year-olds, they have these lists in their head, this is what I can do, and this is what I can't. And it's opportunities like this where they get to cross that line and say, "Wait a second, this is something I can do." And then we can bring that back, and once, once you do that once, every time after that is easier. And that's how we want to show up for each other here at East. I'm going to be there, I'm going to support you, and you're going, well, no, I am going to push you, I am going to challenge you, but you got a family here at East. And this trip is just a little piece of that.
Thanks for having us. My name's Kevin Poet. This is my 20th year at East. I am the other 6th grade math teacher, and I'm going to kind of piggyback a lot of the things Christian had to say. I really want to share my thoughts on how invaluable environmental learning trips are to our 6th graders in the Wayzata School District. I can't remiss not acknowledging the Wayzata Education Fund and our middle school principals for making this happen. It was amazing, and I like to connect it to Wolfridge, where we used to go my first 14 years, and I'm going to kind of share a lot of the same things Christian said. It was, it's been some of the fondest memories of teaching at East is connecting what we've done in these environmental trips, and when the kids come back, and the leverage we have connecting with them. The core memories these kids share, I've been in the district, like, they have immediate flashbacks, and it's just, we, it just, it's, it's just the best years of their lives. This year, seniors are sadly the last ones to go. I remember always asking 8th graders, "What was their highlight of middle school?" And 99% would say going to Wolfridge. A few anecdotal things, even this year, at the parent chaperone meeting, one of the moms happened to go, and I randomly said, "Who are your roommates?" And she literally rattled them off, like, within five seconds, and she went to Wolfridge 22 years ago. I was lucky to coach girls hockey in Wayzata, and I always remember the week I had to tell them I was going to be gone next week, they're like, "Why, like, what do you mean, like? I'm going to Wolfridge." You're like, "What?" Like, like the flashback on their faces and the memories they had instantly, and these were girls that probably hadn't been there in five or six years, and like, were like, sad, like, that I got to go back, and they, they really missed out on it. But the real reason why I wanted to be here is like, the life lessons they get from that, that we bring back to the classroom as teachers, is kind of what's to make all worthwhile. We were asked by some of our admin, like, "How do you quantify Wolfridge?" Like, you can't. You can't get a grade at Wolfridge. Christian mentioned a lot of the same things. You can do hard things. We put these kids in situations that they're not even ready for, but the life lessons they get out of it, it's impactful. Yeah, they do incredibly hard and challenging adventures on these trips, they take risks, it requires grit, endurance, perseverance, they rely on others, they have to help and encourage others, and that's just listing a very, very few of the things. But it's those life qualities and character traits that we bring back to the classroom. These are things I've thought of over the years, that I know I can help them teach math, and they can learn math, if they can literally be away from home for a week, travel five hours up north to 240 people they really don't know, live and get along with them for a week, eat magnanimous food, climb up a 20-foot rock wall, get your group of 13 kids up on a floor eight feet above your head, snowshoe for two to three miles, go on a night hike when it's 10 degrees below zero, cross country for the first time, dissect an owl pellet, clean up after 300 people in KP, and then get to come down and leap off a zip line that's 25 feet high in the air. So we come back to the classroom at East, like, please don't tell me you can't figure out an equivalent fraction or do a one-step problem. I've seen you do things much harder than that, and these are things you're going to do way, way down the road. And then I'd like to wrap up, last thing, we did get to go to Eagle Bluff in September, and Meg was in my group, and we got to go on the ropes course, and this student was not having it. It was a struggle. Everything I've just kind of talked about, they were not having it. Were they kind of holding up the line? They were. But they did it. People down below were encouraging them. She felt it in her heart, she could do it. She got to the finale, and she got to come down the zip line. And I was on a post and back, so I wish I'd seen her come down the face, come down and didn't see her face as she came down the zip line. It's like, when we've kind of seen how we kind of connect, like, she knows there's nothing she can't do, and I think these trips are just kind of part of it. So keep it up, we love it, and let's keep bringing it back. And thank you for your time.
I was able to go to Eagle Bluff this year, which was a really fun experience. I was able to learn in nature, make forts, go to the, go in the river, and go on the ropes course. I love daring things, so the ropes course was really fun for me. I think field trips are important because I get to know students, and it's really fun to have fun. I am really hoping that there are more field trips in 7th and 8th grade. Field trips are important part of the school experience for me.
My name is Sarah Griffin, and I am the Chair of the Wayzata Education Fund. I would like to thank the staff at East for inviting me here this evening to contribute to their presentation. I don't know about you, but I'm extremely inspired by all of the testimony I just heard from staff and Zachary, right? Please, for a second, I was like, oh, my gosh. No, I remember. About their experience at Eagle Bluff and Kevin's story about Wolfridge. And that was the entire reason why the Wayzata Education Fund wanted to partner with Meg, with Ryan, and Marion to provide this experience, to bring back a time-honored tradition that existed in Wayzata and that we needed to reimagine for today in 2025. It is clear that taking students and staff out into the environment helps them cultivate joy, build connection, inspire them, build resilience, and that translates back into the classroom. That is why the Wayzata Education Fund exists. It is a strategic partner, as exemplified in strategic priority number five. We fundraise to help enhance the experience for each and every student here in Wayzata. And what the Wayzata Education Fund wanted to do this year and moving forward is expand our impact beyond the teacher grant program, to take strategic priority number four, improving the health and well-being of each and every community member within the Wayzata Public Schools ecosystem, and think bigger about that priority. And through conversation with principals and other community members, we landed on Eagle Bluff as a great opportunity to, to try out. And it's super inspiring and exciting to see the impact that it had this year, that it will have on West students in two weeks and on Central students in December. And I'm really excited about the opportunity to have the Wayzata Education Fund continue to partner with the district, with Wayzata Public Schools, pre-K through transition, to build these experiences, to continue building these experiences for students, to partner with Wayzata Public Schools, to meet the needs of each and every student, and to enhance the opportunities also for students, for teachers and staff. So I'll leave you with one story. I was, feel very honored to have attended one of the days with East, and I'm very moved by the staff members at East. They know every student's name, even if they aren't the teacher or, you know, directly with a group of students all day, and I'm very in tune to that. I think that I saw students trying new things, you know, overcoming fears. There's one student in particular, I'm not going to mention her name, but she has stuck with me, I even mentioned her to Meg tonight, so creative, took the solo unstructured time in the cafeteria to create a crown out of a lunch bag. Like, that is moving to me, because this was a full day without tech, to just have autonomy over your time and learn something new. And 6th graders, one of my, just, I don't know, reflections on the day is, 6th graders are so young. I have a nine-year-old and a three-year-old. When I see a 6th grader alongside my old, my own children, I think, wow, they're so old. And then I see them in a group of 160, playing, just playing, and I'm like, okay, this is no different than my three-year-old, actually. Like, and we, it's really hard to remember. Like, and it's really hard to remember that. And so I felt really honored to have a window into that at Eagle Bluff. So thank you for having me. And I look forward to continuing the partnership.
So I cannot thank Wayzata Education Fund enough for partnering with us. And Sarah and Karina are way more than just financial support. They were there every step of the way to help us organize and get this off the ground in two weeks of the school year starting. And a special thanks to Kevin Poet as coordinator and Christian B. Horeen because it is a giant lift to get all of those students on a bus and ready to go in the first two weeks of school. But we are so very grateful to have had that experience with our students. And it is carrying through as we start the year and the relationships that we have built. So now I have the privilege of welcoming Ella Bedard, an eighth-grade student, up to the podium. She has been a student leader at East in her time. And I told her, I said, okay, I'll introduce you, Ella Bedard, seventh grade. And she's like, Ms. Bennett. I'm like, I'm sorry, I want you to stay here. I can't imagine that you're gonna be at the high school next year. So we just recently had our first student leadership meeting at East, and I was getting the students' feedback on our vision. So I bring our vision up. We read the vision together. And I asked them, where have we hit this so far? Like, where have we started the school year and we haven't? And where have we not yet? And what solutions do you have for us moving forward? And Ella spoke so eloquently about her experience and how we're responsive to her voice and how we've been innovative in our thinking. So I'm excited for you to be able to hear that from Ella. Come on up, Ella.
Do you want to stand?
Yeah, sure. Is this good?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Hi.
Let me just put this down. Oh, thank you. Okay, ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello. So I'm here to speak about two main ways that East has been responsive to student feedback. One was our new schedule. And as a sixth-grade student, I think I and my peers were really interested in pursuing more classes that kind of suited our interests. And East was really responsive to that. And after the first year of our new schedule, East again listened to our feedback about what we liked and didn't like. One of the things that we were requesting was more of the classes that we enjoyed and like forensics and theater, for example. We also were requesting more time for those classes. So for eighth grade, it's been increased from a half block to a block. And that was fantastic. Where am I? Okay. One of the classes that I really enjoyed this year is musical theater. Last year I took theater, and that was fantastic. And musical theater this year is like even better. It's just our teacher is fantastic. She really listens to us and encourages us to pursue our interests and kind of cultivate our learning, I guess, as well. And I took forensics last year, and my friends this year get more time for forensics. And they've been really enjoying that. One thing I liked from forensics last year was our fire forensics part of the unit, where we had professionals come in and teach us about how a fire starts, how we figure out where a fire starts, how it started, and tracing some of that evidence back, which was really interesting. Another way East has been responsive to student feedback are changes in the classroom. And we used our student survey that we took last December. And I think we had our meeting as well in December. And we had the main questions, are you happy at East? Are you proud of the learning you're doing at East? And do you have at least one supportive adult at East? And as Ms. Bennett kind of already said, our area where we needed help was at our happiness at East. And one thing we, as a student leadership group, talked about was the use of iPads and how we thought that we were on them a lot. And so I really appreciate how this year, it seems everybody's been more intentional about cutting back on that and using more paper and other devices instead of iPads, which has been really helpful, I think, especially to our mental and physical health, staring at a screen all day. So that's been really helpful. Yeah.
You got it. You did great.
Thank you, Ella. Good job. All righty, lastly, we're going to focus on our commitment to deliberate instructional practice to ensure that our vision for student experience, you can see on the pyramid, is guiding our vision for student learning. So we have had, last spring, we had a group of staff engage in an action research cycle, really working to dive deep into research around best practice, get regular feedback from their students, and engage in high levels of learning with a collective group of staff around our instructional practice. And this year, we're bringing that forward to all of our staff. So we're really focusing on creating goals with vision for student experience, guiding our instructional practice, and working to move and reflect on what is our current state and how will we get feedback to take actionable next steps to meet our ideal state in the classroom. So Matt Stika, one of our eighth-grade teachers, is going to come speak to his experience with action research. Thanks, Matt.
Hi, everybody. Like Meg said, I was fortunate enough to be part of that group. We started last spring in action research and really kind of reflecting on our practices. I'm fairly young in my career, so my fourth year only. So it was a lot of fun to be part of and really find some growth within my classroom and really work towards that ideal state and really take into my students' voice, getting feedback from them, things I'm doing that they really love and things that I'm doing that maybe they aren't as fond of. And I was really working towards, as a math teacher, finding success in the classroom. I always ask my students, day one, whose favorite subject is math? And I maybe get five hands out of all one hundred and twenty of my students. So that's always my goal, to get a few more each year. But to really work towards success in the classroom academically and just their feeling of it each day. And as Christian was kind of talking earlier, that's kind of different for every student we have. Some of them, it may be, we're working towards already, what are you gonna do in ninth grade? And some were really building those base blocks so they can feel that success in the classroom that maybe they haven't felt before. And I worked with this idea of bringing back and answering the question of, how will small-group teacher-led intervention during class impact students' academic success but also feeling of success? And throughout class, giving them the opportunity to self-assess kind of where they're at. I use the kind of fist-to-five idea a lot, where if you're a five, you're a teacher, you can teach somebody else how to do that. And if we're a fist, we're working towards that five. We're not there yet, but it's not that I don't know anything. It's, I'm gonna work towards that piece that I know I can do. I always tell them mistakes are opportunities for us to learn. And there's never a chance where I'm gonna get mad at you for making a mistake. It's all a chance to kind of move forward. And really looking at that impact of confidence that it can have. I had students, at the beginning, when I give them feedback, or opportunity for it, that, no, I don't like this, Mr. Stika, what are you doing? Let's go back to, you walk around the room and get help when I need it? And then I had other students, by the end of it, when's the next day we're gonna do this? When's the next day we're gonna do that? And really pulling that small group to a side, working through some of the activities they're already doing in class, but also then giving them note-takers on how to organize things or practicing setting up their operations. So when they're on their own, or I'm not available to them right away, they have the opportunity and the tools to be successful. And talking with my students at the end of the year, a lot of them really loved that idea. And I've, and starting it in spring last year, it was successful, where I'm seeing increase in test scores, students' confidence from a student who may be turning in a blank test at the beginning of the year to filling out the full thing, getting a passing score, which is so exciting to see, and now starting it in the beginning of the year. Students are already asking for it. They're seeing that increase in students who maybe, in past years, haven't been engaged in math class, are participating, they're engaged the full class period, helping out other students and really getting to thrive. And that only not helps me see that those actionable steps are working, but that in-student experience is so important, and they're working towards that ideal state. And they continue to have choice. I don't force anybody to come to the table and work with me, but it really helps them work towards kind of the next steps as they move into high school as eighth graders, making successful choices, making choices that fit best for them and maybe not their best friend that's sitting next to them, but what works best for them so they can continue to grow in a subject where some of them haven't felt that success before, and working towards their voice being heard and that feeling of success. So we, as teachers, know that the feedback and the coaching we get to receive really works towards something that we see success in our students, which I think helps us each day to continue to want to come back even on those tough days. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to spotlight a lot of the special things of our school at East. We have a very proud East family, many of them here tonight. And we're proud for so many reasons, but primarily for the experience that we create for our students that results in really high academic outcomes for each of our students. So if you have any questions for any of the members, we would be happy to answer any questions about our incredible school.
Okay, thank you, Principal Bennett. Greatly appreciate any questions, comments. Yeah, pass. Hi. No questions, but I just wanted to thank you, you, Sarah, and all of your teams to make Eagle Bluff happen. I remember when Sarah first time brought it up in Wayzata Education Fund meeting, it was a tall order. I mean, something that beats Woolfridge, it's not an easy task.
Yeah.
And our older daughter, she went through that experience, and that was wonderful. So everything that you said completely resonated. And I still remember, her best memory was lying down on the frozen lake and just when they realized they have already packed. So they weren't like enough, you know, warm clothes, if you will, out. But they still did that and they enjoyed it. So I really wish my second daughter could have done it. She's in eighth grade, so she's gonna miss it. But the point is, again, when Sarah brought it up, I know there were a lot of discussions, brainstorming, Ms. Bennett, with you and your leadership team. So just wanted to acknowledge it. It's not something that, you know, some of you just organized it on the fly. It's been like months in, you know, work in progress. So just wanted to appreciate everything that you guys have put together behind the scene. And now we are here. And again, I'm hoping we'll continue it, you know, years to come. So again, just wanted to thank both teams, Wayzata Education Fund as well as East. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, at least, I would say, once every three days, when I'm in the halls, I hear from a seventh or eighth grader, so Ms. Bennett, and they wink. What's our field trip coming up? So they're feeling like something is in the works, and they want it to be their turn because they are very sad that they missed out. So.
We'll go left, right?
I just wanted to hear a little bit of history about how did we go from Woolfridge to Eagle Bluff? And if you can give a little bit of history.
Yeah, Kevin might be able to share more history than I can. But my understanding is that Woolfridge just was discontinued during COVID and that there was some question and some wondering about after COVID, how we might bring that experience back for students. And so we were working through some of those questions and wonderings and came to at least an extended day experience so that we can kind of get that experience back for students and not some of the concern potentially of having students gone for an extended day that we were hearing from some families because that was something maybe their children hadn't experienced yet. And so we were taking one step in with hopes that we can continue to consider what that experience is for students. But I think Woolfridge was...
To be honest, it's just proximity. I mean, Central is when up north, West is always kind of Eagle Bluff. I mean, to get this experience started like where we wanted to, we had to start somewhere. And it was just about two hours away. So I'd love to go back to Woolfridge, but I understand right now Eagle Bluff is just too logistical. So that's where everybody's going to Eagle Bluff. It's only one hour south, near the Rochester area. Everything's the exact same, the layout's the same. But it was kind of weird for us because we didn't know context. It's like it was first step. I'll go back to Eagle Bluff, but Woolfridge, Eagle Bluff for now, it's okay.
I can personally attest that Woolfridge was a big deal. And in my family, my two oldest ones are behind each other. So unfortunately, in my case, though, my oldest one had the best experience. It was interesting that when he came back, I never seen him doing cross-country skiing, but he knew that I had that experience. And he volunteered to go with me around our cul-de-sac. It was very interesting. But my next, my middle one right now, he was anticipating it. And to be honest, unfortunately, because of the COVID, it never arrived. So I'm very thankful that there are adults who fought through that this was actually, I think, at least I remember, I was surprised. I think that after that experience, my son came, I felt a little bit that he was, I saw responsibility, sense of responsibility in him, sense of also taking challenges, like, I will try. Without, you know, sometimes you try other things and things. It was completely different. So I'm a little bit, my middle one didn't get that, but he's going to Orlando. I guess maybe it will cover that part of. But I would like to say the words of appreciation that adults realize that it is how big it is. And to be honest, also, back in my country, we had, I mean, back in Russia, we did a little bit different things. And I did it as a student, and then I did similar things as a teacher. It was interesting. You will learn about students some completely different things. You might see some students, I mean, excellent at school, but then during lifetime, it's very completely a little bit different. So you have to teach them that there are some things need to be done differently. It was, it's interesting. So you might see students different way, too. And students might have a connection to teachers also. And one more thing I would like to comment, I'm so pleased that children are voicing for themselves that iPads, it is way too much time. I'm so proud of you because I totally agree with you. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for the excellent presentation. It's a real, I think, speaking piece of the transformative partnerships we have with the Wayzata Education Fund, East Middle School, the wonderful students, teachers, staff, or we. I was thinking back, actually, to when I went to Woolfridge as a sixth grader. That was a little while ago. And really how special it is from the snowshoeing to the ropes course. And remembering the last day where we did some geocaching and we would go up to this, you know, top, you know, peak and we could look out and see for miles and miles. It was very memorable, to say the least. So I'm thankful for the dedication to hearing out students' experiences and, you know, making it transformative in every way. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
I need a microphone. First, shout out to East. If we looked at the esteemed teachers that we saw on our list of our National Merit Scholarship, there were quite a few of you that were back on the list again this year. So thank you for all the things that you do for our students as they go through East and beyond. Second, a shout out, and I think we saw this in a variety of ways, and Woolfridge is one of those, right? Like, I feel like East isn't just a spot for students when you talk about all the things that you do for students, but it's really also what you do for families and bringing families along. And I think that that was integrated through a number of the things. We're all telling our Woolfridge stories because they were amazing. I feel like I learned to be a middle school parent when I chaperoned at Woolfridge. Right? I had lots of little eye-opening moments, and it was amazing. And then I sent my husband the next year, and that was really true. So thank you for raising both of us as parents in this journey. And then third and lastly, the thing that I think is so amazing is, so you started with, as you think about some of your goals, vocabulary, right? And that vocabulary, and I don't know, like, going back to my middle school, like, hearing vocabulary, that doesn't necessarily translate to fun, right? As we're leaning in, yet what we're hearing all along is from our students is how much East is fun and how much it's there, how it's really important to have that. It's so fun to have fun. Isn't that what you said? Right? Really amazing. So thank you for coming tonight to teach us and remind us about bringing in joy and how that's sort of the pillar of excellence that we need to talk about more.
Meg, I just want to say thank you for coming and showcasing the amazing partnerships and teaching staff and students and all of it. It's just, it's incredibly inspiring, as Sarah has said. Sarah, I know that this has been a huge project in the making for years. And fundraising doesn't really get to the core of how the community has supported this. We were in the room when that was happening at the EdFund Gala. And it was just a sense of absolute excitement. And everybody wanted to get back to that. And everybody wanted to get back to that feeling of going to Wolfridge and having that outdoor experience and that connection in middle school. Because that middle school time, there's something very unique about that experience in the developmental brain of a middle schooler. And so thank you for that and thank you for ushering it. And thank you for pushing it forward even when it was hard. I want to connect just a bit with Matt and the math that you talked about. Because it's interesting to me when we talk about academics and it being, you know, math, reading and writing, how you connected having a place in school and being connected in school and how that really impacts a student's ability to learn. And hearing that there are students who might give you a blank sheet at the beginning of the school year and then fill it out and have a passing grade, that is incredible aggressive growth for that student. And so sometimes the test scores, what I see and what I'm hearing is sometimes the test scores may not be reflective of the actual growth that has happened. But maybe it's, it's getting that student there in their journey. So thank you for bringing that up. It was really important for me to hear that. Thank you guys all for coming.
I have, I have a comment about the few words that I heard from one of the teachers. And this extends what Heidi just said about not learning things, not learning everything in class. You can, you can quantify reading scores, you can quantify math scores, you can quantify all these science scores and everything else. But somebody mentioned three words bravery, empathy, and trust, right? Those are the things you, not that I know of, I don't think you can quantify those. You cannot learn that typically in the classroom, right? So going outdoors to a place like Wolfridge. And what I have learned today is that there is a new equation, at least for me. Bravery plus empathy equal to trust. Okay? And that is something I think I'm getting out of this presentation. So thank you so much for doing that. Our two children were very fortunate to be able to go to Wolfridge a few years ago. And I, I wish, I wish I could go back to those years and be a chaperone. I was not able to do it, I was too busy with work and stuff like that, so. But they do remember Wolfridge even now after about 20 years after having been to those camps. I do have a question.
Yeah.
So in one of the slides, number three, four, or five, I don't remember the number, but in the action item, the PLCs come up with five vocabulary words. I'm just curious, okay, if this is going to be a long explanation, forget about it. I'd like to know. If, if you can explain very simply, very quickly, I would like to know how they come up with those words.
Yeah, good question. So we talk about high leverage words and this learning is new for many of our staff at East. So we're still early in the learning process. But we're learning that some students, for example, a teacher met with me yesterday and said, the student didn't know what the word assessment meant. And so high leverage words of not necessarily content specific, they could be, but high academic vocabulary to ensure that we're building that academic vocabulary for our students. So again, we're early in the learning of identifying. In fact, our literacy kind of professional learning series is starting next week. So our reading specialist will help guide our teams in that learning.
Okay, thank you for that explanation, I appreciate it. Any other comments, questions? If not, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
There's a, there's a giant check there that we.
Somebody take a picture? How much is it? Do you know? How much is it? How much, you know how much, how many thousands?
You can take a photo up if you want to.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you again.
Bravo.
Thank you.
I know. We needed that.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the audience opportunity to address the board. Do we have anybody, Amy?
No.
No? Okay, looks like we don't. No? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next one, which is the administrative reports and recommendations. First, Dr. Anderson will present two policies for approval.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, in your board package tonight, there are two policies. I'll share the following and then highlight which policies are before you for review. The policies and regulations were reviewed as part of the regular review cycle and using the Minnesota School Board Association Model Policy were available by district administration and other district stakeholders were necessary. Final review was completed by the Policy Committee of the School Board. The policy approvals before you this evening are Policy 415, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. And Policy 428, mandated reporting of vulnerable adults. The recommended action is before you and I'll let you state that and move forward as you see appropriate.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. The recommended action then is to approve the policies as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do you waive the second reading?
Waive the second.
Waive the second. Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? You have to say something, Heidi. Okay, okay, so hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Sheila?
Heidi Cater?
Yes.
Valentina Ayers?
Yes.
Dan Janestra?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Paris Bendey?
Yes.
Sheila Pryor? Yes. Millen Sahoney?
Yes.
The motion passes, thank you. All right, so this next item is, is connected with the election for the Wizard Education Fund on November 4th. District Election Clerk, Amy Geis, will present a resolution relating to the appointment of election judges for the general election on November 4th, 2025. Amy?
Good evening, School Board and Superintendent Anzerson. Before you is the resolution appointing election judges for Election Day. Last month, you did approve the absentee judges, which are hard at work at the district office. But this is for the judges specifically serving on Election Day. They are qualified through the city of Plymouth. They'll do refresher training with me on October 28th. And we've worked with most of them before in previous years. They're excellent election judges.
Thank you, Amy. So colleagues, the recommended action is to adopt as presented the resolution relating to the appointment of election judges for the general election on November 4th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
I so move and ask that we waive the reading of the resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there a discussion?
I would like to say something just as a reminder to anybody, you know, here now or listening at home that when we do move our elections to even years, we will no longer have to pay the election judges.
Oh, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so I'm going to read the recommended action again. It's to adopt, adopt as presented the resolution relating to the appointment of election judges for the general election on November 4th, 2025. This is a roll call vote again.
Dan Janestra?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Paris Bendey?
Yes.
Sheila Pryor?
Yes.
Heidi Cater?
Yes.
Valentina Ayers?
Yes.
Millen Sahoney?
Yes, thank you, the motion passes.
Okay, there is no teaching and learning report this evening. And the next item on the agenda is the finance report. Executive Director of Finance and Operations, Trevor Peterson, will present the combined financial report for the month ending August 31st, 2025. Trevor?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Sahoney, Dr. Anderson, members of the board. As mentioned, tonight, we're bringing forth the financial statements through August 31st, 2025, which happens to be only two fiscal, or two months within the fiscal year. So it's a little bit harder to continue to have comparisons from prior years. But you can see the majority of both our revenues and expenditures are very consistent from prior years. The revenue looks a little bit goofy yet just because we have a larger line item of property tax revenue that has zero at this point. We get those metered out. Half of our November payment comes in October with the rest of it coming in November. And then we get another split payment in the following May and June. So you won't see those yet for a couple of months. State aids are starting to trickle in and similar with our federal aids, like the property taxes. We typically don't get those at the beginning of the year as our draws usually occur later on in the year. So you'll see that reflected too as those percentages reflect from prior years as well. So some of the things to point out on the expenditures, you might look at our salaries and benefits and say, two months in, we should have about two twelfths or 16% of our salaries and benefits paid by now. The majority of our staff are paid through, through the months of September through May and not in July and August. We do have quite a few, or a few year-round salary, or employees that get paid year-round. So there are some, but certainly not to the extent that you might see equal to two twelve. So that's why those percentages are a little bit lower. All in all, again, it is pretty early in the year to be monitoring too closely. But we do like to look at that bottom line when you look at total expenditures of all funds, where they can, where they sit compared to prior years. And if something looks a little amiss, we might do a little more digging. But knowing that there are generally a lot of things that are dependent on the timing of expenditures, timing of projects, timing of purchase of supplies, those kind of things. So all in all, nothing too unique to report in the revenue and expenditure report. I did take the liberty based on a question last month. If you focus on the general fund only and see that our revenue is projected to be about 23, 231.7 million and our expenditures are about 237 million, so about a $5.5 million expenditures over revenue. I think that's a, a pretty easy thing to look at that and say, that doesn't look very good. That looks upside down. But if you remember back to when the preliminary budget was presented in June, and I also talked about this when the LTFM was approved in July as well. I did redo, I did have the, the finance team redo the financial report analysis that excludes the LTFM just because we did have that one year of that negative adjustment for, through our levy from, from about three years prior where we did not spend all of our LTFM revenue. So that negative adjustment is kind of throwing off our revenue a little bit. So when you exclude both the revenue as well as the expenditures for LTFM, you can see that our general fund revenue is budgeted to be about 225 million and our expenditures are about 222 million. So again, that, that report, that additional report was just in, in response to a question that came up not only last month at the, the board meeting, but also at our most recent finance committee of the board too. So this is not an action item, but I was certainly happy to try and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Trevor. Any questions? All right, hearing none, we can go on to the next item. So Trevor will now present to the board the open enrollment non-resident agreement for fiscal year 2026, '27.
Yeah, it's been pretty typical for the district to bring forward to the board a resolution October of each year for the following year open enrollment agreement, our non-resident agreement. So in this case, we're looking at the 26, '27 school year. There are a few changes in this resolution compared to what we approved last October for '25, '26. So I will call those out a little bit. In our, in last year's resolution or the current year resolution, we did say we do have to take the minimum up to 1%. Our minimum 1% for each grade level for, for open enrollment, for open enrolled students in. And we did have language in there too that should we have children of staff members or siblings of open enrolled students in, that we would allow up to five of each of those categories in a certain grade level depending on capacity within a building. This resolution for 26, '27 has similar language, but we're, we're adding a little flexibility in that where it's basically saying we will go up to, or we might go up to, we would consider going up to 2% at any grade level with priority given to the staff, children, as well as siblings. And that's just, gives us an opportunity to look at certain grade levels if we might have capacity that we could, we could allow up to 2% at any grade level, even if they are not children of staff or siblings, should we so choose. So similar language, similar number, but just a little bit more flexibility in this resolution. The recommended action is listed there, so I'll certainly allow you to read that and answer any questions you might have about the resolution.
Okay, thank you, Trevor. So the recommended action is to approve the resolution providing for open enrollment non-resident agreement for 2026, '27. Is there a motion to approve?
I so move and ask that we waive the reading of the resolution.
Thank you. Second. Moved and seconded, is there a discussion?
I have a quick question. Can you tell me, Trevor, do you have an idea of where we're at right now? When, as, so I, I understand that we're at, we have a max of 1% at each grade level. Do you know where we're at for grade levels?
Yes, so other than grades, oh, you might have to help me out here, Chase, 11th and 12th grade. I think a couple of years ago, we allowed more than the 1%.
Correct.
At that time, ninth and 10th graders.
Yep.
Which I believe now in this school year are juniors and seniors. So other than those two years where we had that anonymously, we, we are right at the 1%. We were less than 1% in kindergarten up until a few weeks ago. And then we held a lottery that, per the language, to see, to ask the next set of families if they would like to open enroll as kindergarteners. School had already started, so we did have to get a little further down the list than we might normally get. But we did find two families to agree to do that. So we are at 1% or near that 1% for every grade level excluding those 11th and 12th graders.
Okay, and then I have one more question.
Yeah.
Do we have anticipation that we would meet that 2%? Within, and I guess I'm thinking about first of our staff and teachers.
Yeah, so at, as of this day, for this year, it would not have, it is not something that we would have had to apply to fulfill for staff and siblings. But I, I think this is mostly in response to this year's kindergarteners where we probably could have allowed more than the 1%, just based on what we have for capacity and where the, where the projection, we came in a little bit shy of what we were projecting. But other than that, every staff and sibling that have requested open enrollment have been granted open enrollment into our district.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would like to hear also clarification. You said we came a little bit shy. Can you tell the numbers?
Yes, I think I. Let me just look through this. Hey, pulling it up, Amy. I don't remember for sure off the top of my head, I'm sorry. But I, I know we were about 100 kids short of where we were thinking our kindergarten enrollment would be. I can certainly get the exact numbers and report back to the board on that.
And one more clarification, so this year it allows that we can do up to 2%, correct?
This year, we can do up, a minimum of 1% and then additional five for staff and five for siblings.
So it still will be for, I mean, if it happened to be that staff would like and all, it'll be a max 2%.
Correct, and it just so happens that our average grades are right around 1,000 students. So the 10, the 1% is about 10 students. And the additional five for staff and siblings happen to be another 1% if those were all granted. So it is currently up to 2%. But again, that was pretty rigid in the fact that it had to be staff or siblings, where this language would allow it really to be anybody.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and we do have that now here. So if I'm looking at this right. 872. We were projecting, this is so small, Amy. We were projecting 968 students and we currently have 872. So 96 students short of what we were projecting in kindergarten. Of course, there are other grade levels that exceeded our projections, but definitely the kindergarten ones is why we had a, a discussion about maybe tweaking the, the resolution a little bit to accommodate that. about maybe tweaking the resolution a little bit to accommodate that.
Thank you.
You have a question, Sheila?
Oh, yeah, I was, I needed a clarification. With the 1% required by law, then we're setting up more flexibility so that if we have another 1% that is, you know, historically was preference given to siblings and district employees. But now that, you know, 1% is more flexible and it could be anyone, just.
Correct, yes. With priority given to staff and siblings.
With priority given, yeah, to staff. But that if those aren't filled, then we have flexibility to open it up.
Yep. And, and an example might be if we fulfilled our 1% and we have three additional open enrollment requests that are not staff and siblings, might it be an opportunity to allow those three students in, whatever grade level they might be at, with anticipated capacity within a building to do so?
Right, we're not, if we don't have the room.
Correct, yep, yep.
Then we do it. And then just to clarify, I believe that the high school classes that we opened enrolled last time were, there are now sophomores and juniors, just not that it really matters, but if anybody's listening and they're like, wait, I don't.
Yeah, I heard a couple of yeses over here, so.
Yeah, okay, it was, yeah, just in case anybody was wondering.
Okay, I have a question, Trevor. So, other than the demand and supply thing, what was the, what are the logic in raising that 1% to 2%?
I think it allows us to, in the case that I gave, be able to say yes to two or three additional students and families along the way that should we have space to do so, would be a good thing. So, again, I think it's just a matter of allowing us to maybe start trending to being a little bit more open to those grade levels, looking at those grade levels that should we maybe be short of projections or want to allow those families in, we can do so. Where before, we would not have had that opportunity to do so, yeah.
And the state does not have a ceiling on how far, how high you can go, correct?
Correct.
So, this is mostly a goodwill kind of thing?
Correct, yeah.
All right, thank you so much. Anyone else? All right, if not, I'm going to read the recommended action again. Approve the resolution providing for open enrollment non-resident agreement for 2026, 27. This is a roll call vote.
Paris Bende?
Yes.
Sheila Pryor?
Yes.
Heidi Cader?
Yes.
Valentina Ayers?
Yes.
Dan Janestra?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Millen Sahoni?
Yes, thank you, the motion carries. Okay, so there is no Human Resource Services report tonight and no other board action. The final item on the agenda is board reports. This section of the agenda provides an opportunity for board members to update school board members on school board related work or to make announcements of interest to the public. So, I have a very brief board report tonight. We know that Dr. Anderson has announced his retirement as of June 30, 2026. And the community is wondering what the board will be doing about a search for the new superintendent. So, I would like to report that the process for selecting our next superintendent has begun. We have sought the services of our Executive Director of Human Resources, Dave Lutz. And we, with his help, we have sent out requests for proposals submitted to search firms. And in the months ahead, details will be shared to ensure a smooth, thoughtful and most importantly, transparent transition. Okay, the next board work session is on Monday, October 27th at 5:00 PM. Please note the change in start time, is that right, Amy? 5:00 PM, right? Okay. This concludes the Wazetta Public Schools' regular board meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The time is now 8:30. The Wazetta Public Schools' Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, October 13th, 2025 is adjourned.